No, he's in Key West.
The call to the meeting to order of the village councils, our regular meeting Tuesday, December tenth at seven oh three, if we could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Cook.
Here.
Helmut.
That's it.
Kemp.
Yes.
How you see?
Nicosia.
Nicosia.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
I'll make a motion to excuse councilperson Helmut.
Who was the second?
Ross.
Thank you.
Both and seconded by Ross. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any nay? Motion carries. Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda? I guess, does it play in form?
Yep. Support. Okay, motion by Nicosia, seconded by Kemp. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any nay? Motion carries. Number five on the agenda is a presentation. Chief?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
To citizens. I'm proud to award Sergeant Rousa this evening for the way that he handled the domestic assault incident about a month ago. This is an eerie reminder of how dangerous our job can be at any moment in any call and how things can change drastically when you're on an incident. And how we handle incidents and how we de-escalate them is certainly what I'm proud of, is how Sergeant Rousa handled this incident tonight. So Sergeant, if you could walk up here and stand next to me. This was an eyebrow raiser for me when I came in that morning and read this. On October twenty eighth of two thousand and twenty four, approximately three AM, Sergeant Rousa was dispatched to an aggravated domestic assault involving a knife. Upon arrival and entry of the residence, Sergeant Rousa located the victim. Upon locating the victim, the suspect was then spotted holding up a large knife approaching Sergeant Rousa and the victim. At this time Sergeant Rousa grabbed the victim and ran her out of the house to safety. The responsible then exited the back entrance, holding up a machete in a threatening manner. Sergeant Rousa pulled his service weapon and demanded him to drop the weapon. Listening to his commands from Sergeant Rousa to drop the knife, the suspect then stabbed the machete into the deck. The suspect was then told to approach and taken to the ground where he was secured and taken into custody. Sergeant Rousa used excellent judgment by getting the victim and himself to safety and getting them to a position to de-escalate a dangerous incident. These actions kept the victim, the officer, and the suspect from further harm. The Oxford Police Department awards Sergeant Rousa for his outstanding and professional actions. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you, council.
Thank you, and thank you for your service time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sergeant.
Keep up the good work.
You ain't gonna make it work tonight, too?
Of course.
All right, second presentation this evening is our financial statements and our fiscal year-end audit presentation.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ian. I work for Givernear Company. I'm one of your auditors. I'm on a team, probably a lot of teams. So it was a pleasure to work with Terry while she was still the clerk. I think she's retired now or something, but she's been on here.
I'll stop the door for that.
It was nice to work with Vicky as well and Kelly. She was, everybody made everything very easy. I believe you all have the copy of the audit in front of you. It looks like you do. So I'm just gonna go through kind of our opinion on the audit, the highlights of everything, and answer any questions. So if anybody has any questions, go for it and interrupt me. If you go to the first, page number one, it's about three pages in, but it's the independent auditor's report. And if you look at the first two paragraphs, it states what our opinion is on the financial statements. It's not, it doesn't state exactly what it is, but it's the wording of the verbiage for unmodified or clean opinion, the best opinion the village should receive. In so many senses, you passed the audit, so there's nothing you could've done any better to give a better opinion. So that's the main point of the audit. If you go down a few more pages to page five, this is the management discussion and analysis section of the report. Look at the financial highlights. Your assets and deferred outflows exceed your liabilities and deferred inflows at the close of the year by about twelve point six million. To your equity in the village of twelve point six million. Of that twelve point six, two point one about is unrestricted application, meaning it can be used for anything whatsoever that you need to. The difference between the twelve and the two is largely built up if you capitalize assets or funds that are restricted for the roads or other restricted areas. Your governmental funds combined for total fund balances of about two million, a little bit over that, which was a decrease of eight hundred and twenty-five bucks in comparison to prior year. That's taking all of your governmental funds as a whole. Sixty-five percent of your fund balance is unrestricted or unassigned, meaning it can be used for anything. The difference between your two million and your one point three is all of your restricted funds. Your general fund specifically had one point three million of unassigned fund balance, which equates to about forty-four percent of your annual expenditures. So if you received no income at the end of the fiscal year, you'd survive about forty-four percent of the next year. So it's a sizable fund balance where you have enough cash to finance the next few months, but not too much where you're just sitting on a bunch of cash to not do anything with it. So your general fund had a decrease of about a hundred and seven thousand dollars during the year as well. Go down a few more pages to page eight. This can be a little bit hard to read because we're trying to put a lot of information into a page, but it's your statement of net position. It shows your assets, your liabilities, and your equity, and the changes year over year. You had a pretty similar, over everything, you were all kind of close and similar. Your capital assets increased a little bit, about four hundred thousand, which was mainly a part of your governmental activities. And I guess the other thing you might care about is your pension liability that decreased a little bit as well. You paid all your debt off in accordance with what your schedules say you should. And if you look at the very bottom, it shows all of your equity and how it's allocated in the village. Page nine, this is the same thing with your income statement, your revenues and your expenditures. Again, very similar year to the twenty-three fiscal year. You had an increase in your property taxes of about a hundred K, which is just due to typical taxable value increases. And then your state sources also increased a tad bit due to the marijuana revenue that you got from the state. Expenses were largely the same year over year, about fifty K increased. But you can see how all that boils down into your change in net position, and then your ending net position in total for governmental activities and business type. Pages fourteen, or fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and nineteen are your basic financial statements. The first two, fifteen and sixteen, are exactly what we went over, but for the, it's just for the twenty-four fiscal year. And then seventeen and nineteen show specifically your governmental funds. So if you cared about your general fund or your major streets fund specifically, or some of the other ones, you can see that there. Pages twenty-one and twenty-two are your water and sewer fund and your internal service fund, equipment fund. And that shows the same information if you want to see how each of those funds are performing for the fiscal year. But it's all, what we initially just went over was everything locked together, so it shouldn't be that much different. Beyond that, there weren't any findings, which is good, and so that's all I pretty much have. Any questions on any of it?
Thank you. Okay, Ross?
I have one question. It's in other pages, but page eleven. Is it appropriate, or should we strive to increase our interest in investment earnings at four percent? Like, how does that relate to other governmental entities, and what should we be looking for?
That's, that's a summary of how much of your revenue came from interest in investment earnings. That's not saying that you got four percent for the whole year. It means four percent of your revenues were interest in investment earnings.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just saying, what does that look like in comparison to other?
You are all very similar to other. I'd be more worried or concerned about the rate of return you're getting as opposed to how much is baked into your
Thank you.
overall revenues. I care about the rate of return, which I, are you guys a Michigan class?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. That's what we recommend to most governments.
Thank you.
Am I reading this right on page nine? So the village Oxford changes in net position goes up to twelve six, twelve point six, in twenty-four, and then in twenty-three, was that a lot in six? Is that correct? At the bottom of your summary, total primary government?
Change in net position?
Yeah, so we're at twelve point six million, and at twenty-three, we're at eleven point six?
Yeah.
Now, is, I guess, as far as all of that's concerned, is that a number that we need to be watching, I guess, in terms, where do we want that number to go, and like, kind of what?
It really depends on what fund you're talking about. The business type activities is only your water and sewer fund, so you just wanna make sure that that has enough funding to finance future improvements or additions to the water and sewer fund, which you'd need to do a whole study. You'd need to do a rate study and a, there's stuff through the state that people will come in and see how well your system is and whether you need improvements on it, how much that'll cost. And I can't tell you personally, because somebody's gotta do deep dive into that.
Right. Is that fairly typical to see a million, a million increase over the course of the year?
It's, it depends on what happened during the year. It's not abnormal, I guess. But your water and sewer fund, as long as that's increasing to finance future, it should operate at basically net zero, where you're, it's a nonprofit fund essentially, where you're bringing in funding to finance the future of the water and sewer fund.
Sure.
The other funds, governmental funds, like your major local streets, you just wanna make sure that there's enough funding to finance the future use of your major local streets, I guess. If there's a huge project coming up, you're probably gonna increase your fund balance each year, and then when that project is done, you'll have a giant decrease.
Okay.
Same, the general fund is the one I probably pay the most attention to. People normally would wonder why the general fund has so much or so little fund balance, because that can be used for anything. But the general fund can also be used to help pay for the major local street fund activities, or the water and sewer fund if you need to.
Which we have, we have transferred, so the general fund, part of an extra million K, as well as additional general fund dollars to our local streets for all those street projects.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions, Ian, council? No? Thank you very much, Ian.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ian.
Next up on the agenda is call to the public. If anyone would like to address council, please feel free to step to the podium. Seeing no one approaching, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Item number seven, seven A, our receiving file items, is there a motion?
Motion to receive and file consent agenda items, A, one and two, correspondence and department reports.
Thank you. So second?
Support.
Motion made by Nicosia, seconded by Kemp. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any nay? Motion carries. How about a motion for seven B, approval items?
Motion to approve consent agenda items, B, approval of minutes for November twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four, item one. Item two, bills in the amount of eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty-eight cents. And three, monthly budget report, treasurer's report, and budget amendments.
Support.
Motion made by Nicosia, seconded by Kemp. Vote, all vote, please.
Kemp?
Yes.
Ross?
Any further discussion? It's on the consent agenda. We can move it down to another. Oh, no, you move it then. Yes.
Okay. Nicosia?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Motion carries. That is approved. Number eight is unfinished old business, A, the mass tax program. Mr. Midori?
Yeah, and when we were looking at the water plant shutdown and stuff, there was a little bit of a urgency to get something in place. And the one I had looked at about, it was, it was probably the most expensive one, because it came preloaded, and there was like a seventeen hundred dollar setup fee and all those things. I'm further looking at some other ones, because they're only in the few hundred dollar range versus three, four, five thousand dollar range, that we would have to build it out ourselves. So I'm looking at that option as maybe, you know, now that we don't have at least a direct pressure of a project pending in front of us, that maybe we wanna investigate a couple of different options. They're widely used, but they kinda had to pre-populate or populate as you go versus paying for the extra costs of the pre-populated version, which some people may or may not like. That other one, when you just show up, all of a sudden, you're sending them texts out of the blue. There's pros and cons to both of them. But rather than coming back and saying, let's move forward with this one, that's gonna be fifty-one hundred dollars, I wanna look at some of the ones that might be, you know, three hundred dollars. Because we're looking to only use this in the case of, notifications are really, really needed. There's a water land break over here, there's a snow emergency here, a bad accident, perhaps, that, you know, this is gonna be shut down. So I'm, you know, we're talking a handful of texts a year. And so I think maybe taking a different look and trying to build it out over a few months and adding population to opt-in would be a better approach. So that's what I'm leaning towards.
Yeah, I like that opt-in approach. I think we could probably, a lot of the people who want to be informed electronically, I think, are likely to reach out to have their number added to that.
Yeah.
Can we put, like, a couple, I mean, can we put a sentence on the water bill?
Yeah.
I don't know if there's options.
There's a, there's a small amount there, right? We have a message on there right now. I can't remember what it was. We changed it this, last month, and then we ran it again this month. I can't remember what that one was now. We updated it. It's not a very small, it's not a very large space, but we can get a couple of sentences on there. We did update the message now. I can't remember, because Vicky typed it up for me. We were trying to panaggl around to fit it in and what I needed, and now I can't remember what the message was, because I don't see the water bills. But yeah, and it doesn't stick out, you know? We can't print it in different color and things like that, or that prints. But yeah, we, through our website, through our social media, with sharing of the, you know, viruleness of that, I think we'll get it out there pretty good, as far as those who wish to be. And I would have, perhaps, there's gonna be people outside of our jurisdiction, of course, that might wanna opt-in too, for reasons of like, because their kids go to school here, they wanna know if that road's gonna be closed, or something like that.
That's gonna be another question of mine. Do you want to keep it just to the village, where you'd have to verify your address, or do you want to see the vet?
Yeah.
I mean, is there an initial expense to sending?
And some of them are, because you're allowed to say twenty-five thousand texts. Well, if you're sending out to a thousand people, that's twenty-five texts a year. But if you're sending out to twenty-five thousand people, that's one text a year. So, yeah, you don't wanna necessarily purposefully grow it beyond our scope, but how, how much we wanna limit or prohibit them, I guess, would be a learning curve.
Thank you.
That's you.
Yeah, I guess, would we, would we technically own that user data? So like, the points of contacts and the names, or is that something that they?
There's different programs out there. I'd have to get into the weeds on that and see how that works. I don't think, I have ran across one of them that, that uses it for any other reason than our individual use. I haven't seen anyone that say, oh, and you're part of this, and therefore those people are gonna get junked or spam or anything else. I haven't seen anyone that likes that. They're all exclusive to your use, because you're paying for it. It's not like, you know, free stuff is when you run across things like that.
Sure.
We're looking to pay for this service. Again, don't wanna pay five thousand dollars, and then that's thirty-five hundred a year after the setup of that one, for something we're gonna send out two or three texts a year. It might be better to buy one where you get twenty-five thousand texts, and you might not use them for two or three years, but it's five hundred bucks. So there's, there's different ways to do it. But yeah, they are, everything I've seen so far is, those people, you don't, you can be assured that they're not gonna be shared. That data's not shared through them, and so.
Any further discussion? Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Number nine, new business, A, is election of village council officers. This is our village council president and president pro ten.
Madam President, if I could make a suggestion, that we just went through all the new bank signing statements with you and Allison on them. So if anything does happen to change tonight, we'll have to go through all that again.
No, no.
Because, you know, one clerk, leaving new clerk on all new bank signing statements.
There's a lot of work. Yeah.
We will do it. We'll just, if that matters.
Do we reelect every year, then?
No, every two years, when new, when new members come on.
Okay, thank you. I was just looking at the dates. I'll make a motion to reelect, is that how we made a reelect? Reelect Kelsey Cook as president and Allison Kemp as president pro ten for the next two-year term?
Support.
Yeah, motion made by Ross, seconded by Nicosia. Any discussion? I'm more than happy to continue to serve in this role, so thank you.
Thank you, Kelsey, since you take the starring role.
Okay, any further discussion?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks. Do we need a roll call for that?
I think you probably should.
Okay. Do that, please.
Okay, sorry. Kemp?
Yes.
Nicosia?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
May I also say, motion?
Continue on with my chairperson.
So nine B is the audit approval of financial statements. And that is just approved in the audit that's presented at the earlier in the board meeting.
Yep.
Any motion to approve the audit as presented?
Support.
Motion by Ross, seconded by Nicosia. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, vote, please.
Ross?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Nicosia?
Yes.
Motion carries. They are approved. Nine C is the twenty-twenty-five post-village Oxford meeting schedule. So this is pretty standard for the charter.
Yep, yep. Certain ones you have to publish, you know, or adopt schedules on, because they're required. And other ones, you know, that aren't really like the youth assistance, stuff like that, aren't required, but we've put them on one schedule just to make it convenient for people to see them. The ZBA, if you see September first, the highlighted ones are holidays. The only ones I would probably be worried about would be the downtown development authority, their meeting is next week, they're gonna decide and perhaps change that, if they don't wanna meet on MLK Day.
Is that a holiday that the village offices are closed for?
Yes.
Okay.
So because they, our meeting's before theirs, we could, you could, you could adopt the meeting schedule, subject to change, and for theirs. And then our ZBA, I wouldn't worry about that. We rarely get any. And the cable commission, they do meet, but I don't, we don't really necessarily approve theirs. I guess we are a member. I think their board kind of more approves theirs. So we just noted on here, so I don't think we're really approving theirs. We're approving our village council, ZBA, and planning commission for the most part, and then the DDA by default. But they will choose, because I brought it up to Kelly, our DD director, and they'll have it on their agenda next week to address.
Kimberly?
I'm sorry, Kimberly. I'm still working on it.
It's very common.
I'm sure it is. So you said that we are approving the DDAs, but they can choose to change their meeting if they want to, so, okay. I'm going to approve the village meeting schedule as presented for council's VBA, planning commission, and DDA.
Support.
Motion made by Cook, seconded by Nicosia. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any nay? Motion carries. That is approved. Next is the twenty-twenty-five office calendar. Those are village holidays.
Yes. And you see, there's two of them that are only related to the police department, because they're on Fridays. We're already off on Fridays, so we don't recognize those. But the police department, which is, office is open on Fridays, those will always pertain to them.
Gotcha. Same holidays as those this year?
Yes.
See, being that two of the holidays are on Fridays, do we offer our employees any observed days, then?
Well, it, they would take the day off, because it's on a Friday, right? We, on our side, we've kinda taken a position that we already have Fridays off, so if it's on a Friday, we're not gonna make it to a Thursday. Saturdays and Sundays are across the board for the police union, the DPW union in our office. If it's a Saturday or Sunday, we will recognize it on a different day, but we, amongst ourselves, choose not to do that for Fridays, because we're already off on Fridays. So, you know, just the four of us are off. But we are very appreciative of already having fifty-two Fridays off. If a holiday happens to call on a Friday, we're not taking a Thursday to make up for it.
Any other questions?
But for those who are scheduled on Fridays, obviously.
Or off.
Chief, yeah, chief, chief, yes, chief, chief, and Robin, who works in the police office. Yes, of course they do. And anybody that's on a Saturday observes on a Friday, or Monday for a Sunday. We're just hedging our bet on our side that we wanna not lean towards the Fridays going away.
Gotcha.
By being overzealous on taking Thursdays.
Motion to approve twenty-twenty-five office calendar.
Second. Motion made by Nicosia, seconded, was that Ross?
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Motion carries. Next is the boards and commission appointments. So, starting at the top of the spreadsheet in front of us, the zoning board, I believe, Mr. Midori said that one of our PC members must serve on the ZBA.
According to our bylaws.
According to our bylaws.
Not the statute, doesn't require, the statute allows it.
Okay. And then Tom Schultz did
He did.
agree to
Yes, I think Monday of this week, yes.
And then Adam Randall's term would just expire at the end of
Right.
the year, and then in his place, we would appoint, we would appoint Tom Schultz.
Yes.
To satisfy the bylaws.
Yes.
And then everything else is good to go on ZBA.
Yes.
Assuming Jacob, you wanna remain on the ZBA.
Sure, yeah, I'll do that. You'll have me.
With pleasure. So I will make a motion to reappoint Jacob Nicosia to the zoning board of appeals for another three-year term.
Yep, four. His, because he's elected, goes
Goes through the end of
His term of office. So it says term expires November twenty twenty-four, it's actually November twenty-eight.
Yep, okay. The four-year term?
Yes.
And then Tom Schultz to fill the vacancy that will be left by Adam Randall's on his term expires at the end of two thousand and twenty-four, and that will be for a three-year term.
Yep.
Support.
Okay, so motion made by Cook, seconded by Kemp. Any discussion? Hearing none.
Who made the motion? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, that was Cook and Kemp.
Thank you.
Our voice votes okay on these. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Motion carries. And then moving down to the planning commission.
Yep, just the two expiring terms to deal with.
Two expiring are Leslie Hulep and Justin Ballard. They both agreed to be reappointed. Lucky for the planning commission, they both do an incredible job.
Mm-hmm.
So I'll make a motion to So I'll make a motion to reappoint Leslie Kielak and Justin Ballard to additional three-year terms of the expiration of their term ending 2024.
Support.
Motion made by Cook, seconded by Nikasia, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nay? Motion carries. Next we have the Michigan Municipal League and SEMCAG, so I guess traditionally, council kind of splits that up right now. The current delegate for MML is Allison and Jacob's alternate, and then SEMCAG with me as an alternate. Does anyone have an interest in being the delegates for SEMCAG or MML? Anyone who might want to attend those meetings?
Mo's not here, Mo's not here.
Mo might just have everything. Could you imagine?
What I read these.
Okay. I'll start with MML then. Allison, do you want to stay on with MML, or do you want to?
Completely up to if anyone else has interest, or even, like, when the convention comes, we could always switch if.
Well, anybody can go to the convention, as a delegate, you are the voting representative. Right, so you, anybody can go as a member of MML, which you all are, you can go to trainings, you can go to the conference. But one is the person that would cast any vote on behalf of the village.
And if I remember correctly, it was a, like, 15-minute meeting if.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I don't think it was.
So heavy lift. But obviously you need to be there to vote, so.
I wouldn't mind going to the MML, I'm in Lansing a lot, and if that's where it's held, I could probably make it. Was it somewhere local or?
It was a convention, which was.
Like a cap conference or?
They moved, wasn't it in Grand Rapids one year?
Yeah, it was Detroit another year.
They, they do move around a little bit, so.
But I have no objection if you.
Okay. I'll switch you for SEMCAG.
Sure.
Unless anybody else wants to do SEMCAG.
I don't, I don't mind doing SEMCAG, whoever's.
Great.
I think it's only one, like, one or two a year.
Yeah, there's the general meeting, I know Rod Charles always goes with town. Okay, and then alternate, do you want to stand as alternate for MML then, Allison?
Sure, I shouldn't let one go.
Okay. So for MML, I'll appoint Kelsey Cook as delegate, Allison Kemp as alternate. That's an annual appointment. That's my motion.
Second.
So a motion made by Cook, seconded by Ross, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any nay? Motion carries. Next for SEMCAG, I'll move to appoint Jacob Nikasia as delegate, Ashley Ross as alternate.
Am I allowed to support that?
Yep.
Support.
Thank you, motion made by Cook, seconded by Nikasia, any discussion on that one? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Our poor beautification commission, I'm, I'm wondering if maybe this can partner with the DDA in some way.
Well, it's in our charter that it exists, right?
Right, it has continued to exist, but I mean, the DDA is really, plays a large role in the beautification, so maybe.
And we, we did reach out to the Oxford Garden Club about the, the southern part of Centennial Park, and they're actively pursuing that, they, it gets a really good plan. Don and his crew went and stripped everything out, did the weed killer barrier and all that stuff, so they can go after that in the spring. So perhaps is a way to deputize them as a beautification commission?
Yeah.
I don't know, I mean, there are some formalities in this, you have to meet each quarter, and they're supposed to do like an attendance in minutes or something like that, at least quarterly. Again, I don't know, I haven't had that conversation with them, but as we maybe work with them a little closer, maybe they'd be willing to.
Yeah.
Take on that role too. But if not, if there's, believe me, if there's others available or interested, we wouldn't want to shy away from that.
Yeah, maybe, I can't remember when we meet, I'll talk to you about, because if we can appoint folks to the beautification commission who are already serving in that capacity with the DDA, then that might be a good way to.
Yeah, yeah, because you, you guys, you, you do the spring cleanup, then you do something maybe in the fall or something, you know, you could. You could say, we're doing it as a beautification commission also. You know, just, you're wearing two hats that day, you wouldn't do anything really different, other than somebody is the chair and somebody makes some minutes. We all met at Centennial Park, we put mulch in, end of minutes. But again, there's a five members and three must be village residents and.
Joe, if I remember, there is a budget line item for that as well.
Yeah, you know, I think a couple of years ago, we, I put like $120 in there because it was like a little membership they had even, and Kathy Helmer came to me, well, as a matter of fact, the, I think we have a thousand dollars into it, with $1,100, $1,200 this year. Because that was one thing that the garden club asked me, I said, well, I think we have, you know, 1,100, 1,200 now, but if you need something more in spring, give me a list of the plants and what do you do, I'm sure would be happy to, you know, adjust that if, a few hundred bucks if need be.
So that's nice, comes with some money to help out, so. I don't, I'm not aware of anyone who's interested in the beautification commission at the moment, we can certainly kind of post, you know, do, you know, social media posts or something if we can gain some interest. I think it would be more interesting if they were partnered with an organization like the DDA, who's more structured to do beautification type projects, so. That was my idea on how to maybe draw some people to these appointments.
Part of the problem, aren't they like scheduled to meet like 10 o'clock on a Tuesday or something?
Isn't that's up to the chair and the group, you know, you could coincide it with their committee meetings and say, you know what, we're, we're having a, what committee does, beautification committee here, no, what do you have, the one downtown, you have EV.
Design.
Design, maybe design or something like that, and you can say, you know, we're going to take, you know, about the plantings in the park, or the plants along M24. Beautification commission generally though, scope is outside of the DDA district, so they wouldn't be restricted to the district, right, where your guys are and your committees are. Because if you recall, up until COVID, I believe, you know, they'd go around each year and take pictures of the homes, and John's photography, you'd take a really nice picture, and they would choose winners of.
Based on the.
Yeah, well, we haven't really seen much and been involved, you know, it seems lately, because. I don't remember, because, because, because they.
Tanya has been the only one serving.
At least since, I know up until '23 they didn't.
Yeah, okay, 20th, she resigned Kathy Helmer, Kathy Helmer was the driving force, right, she was the chair, and, and Ms. Royster, Ms. Burr were there for a long time too, so they were very adept at doing it. They redid our plantings in our backs out here in '23, I think. But as you lose some of those longtime members, it just kind of.
Yeah.
I mean, shoot, four of the five resigned within, you know, all within a year. So it's.
What do you think for Mo?
If you're talking about putting this in potentially a DDA realm, I think it would make sense to have whoever does DDA also support this, but I don't see a council person that has to be on here, but.
Right, yeah, true.
Yeah, no, I don't think, I don't think it's historically had any council members on it. Not seeing that, though in the past, sometime, you know, somebody didn't, but.
Right.
Not in recent history that I'm aware of.
Are you saying you want to be the council person that serves on this?
I don't think you want me to. You've stayed in my yard, it's glamorous.
Well, we can just put that down as more to come, so those, there are four vacancies on that commission right now, so. Polyandrial, I know that this one, the meetings are during.
3:00 PM on Wednesdays, yeah, and I, I.
Wednesday?
And I'm typically, because they changed their bylaws a couple of years ago, so I'm, when I, when Allison or whomever can't go and I'm there, then I sit in, and I vote like a regular member, because they changed the bylaws as alternates to allow to do that. So it's working good, whether it's Allison or anybody else.
You're just sitting staying out there, or do you want to flip to something different?
It's, if someone can make the meeting, it's a rough time to make, it's kind of the hard.
Yeah, it's 3:00 PM, and some of them go till 4:30. You wouldn't think the little polyandrial would go there, but sometimes they do.
Okay.
So, again.
Is it monthly meetings?
Yeah.
Yeah, and again, whoever's name gets on there, if you can't make it, I go.
Okay, so maybe it's okay to keep it as is, then, okay, that's fine.
Yeah, because I know once.
I won't take it from someone who.
I know, once or twice a year, every now and then it lines up, starts lining up, and you're able to go, yeah.
All right, so I'll move to, we have to do the, we still have to do the reappointments, so, right, so I'll move to reappoint Allison Kemp as member and Joe Midora as alternate for the Polyandrial Management Council.
For two years, yeah.
For the next two years.
Support.
A motion made by Cook, seconded by Nikasia, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nay? Motion carries. NODA, so this was Lori Bojo served on NODA. I'm not sure when the meeting, do we know?
4:30 Thursday, I think it is. Which, yeah, another.
Tough one.
Tough one, for, for me too. Now, I wonder, I wonder if the, because, I wonder if it has to be a council member. I mean, you guys typically have had, or, you know, because council members then have buy-in here, right?
If it doesn't, what about our DDA?
Oh, man.
I don't mean that facetiously, but I, truly, if, if it doesn't have to be a council person, I'm not trying to, but they're immersed regularly with NODA, with the trolley, transportation, if it doesn't have to be.
Well, let me find out if it has to be. We'll find out. It may be prohibited from that DDA director.
Specifically?
So we'll pass on that one for this meeting, and maybe reconsider when we have more information. So I doubt Mo has that schedule times either, so.
Because I know everybody on there is not representative of, you know, there are some members at large, so.
Okay. Cable commission.
I think Mo really enjoys that, and she's not, she's not up anyways, but there is, you know, so the vacant alternate, I don't know, she makes most of them. I think, I think the one that she didn't make this year is because she forgot about her or something, she was doing something.
Yeah, let's, I'll move to reappoint Maureen Thomas.
Well, she's not expired yet, there's just an alternate that's a vacant, there's a vacancy for an alternate, but I don't really know how necessary that is, is my point.
Does anyone want to be an alternate for the cable? Okay, do we know when those meetings are, actually?
I don't, I'll tell my page.
Okay, Jake, we're okay with it for now.
It's, it's.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll move to appoint Jacob Nikasia as alternate for the cable commission.
Okay.
Thank you, Jacob, any discussion? Hearing none, that's a two-year term.
Second.
Oh, sorry, you're right, cook, any support? Motion made by Cook, seconded by Kemp, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any nay? Motion carries. DDA.
What, DDA?
Jacob, are you, are you okay to continue with designated, with your schedule looking? So I know you're busy.
So I did just start a new job, and I'm going to be very busy coming up here. I prefer if I could at least take kind of a break from it for a little bit, but if your schedule's too tight, I, I still can serve. Just going to be really focused at work for the next six months or so here.
Okay.
And then after that, I'm free.
Okay. Since, if Jacob remains as designated, Joe, and I can, I'm available to go to, either one of us can go.
I believe so.
Right, so. Okay.
Okay.
Let me know any.
Yeah.
I can, I can attend them, so just let me know if you, you need to go, we'll just check in each month.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay. So with that, there's a vacancy that, again, from the end's resignation, right, last one. And I want to appoint Ashley Ross to that vacancy for the member at large. Ashley, our current, our current council member here, will be an enormous asset to the DDA, she's served on the board before, and all her experience with everything downtown, with the government grants, et cetera. Support. So Cook, motion, Kemp, support, any discussion? On that one?
I kept standing on this one since I'm not a council.
No, since you don't, financially.
Okay.
Who pay you the same as pay everyone else.
Thanks.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any nay? Motion carries. And then Bryce Clark moved out of the district, and we had an application come through from Jay Choi, and he and his wife own a business in the downtown district and also reside in the downtown district, which is very unique, which is all at times defined and extremely valuable to the DDA as well. So I spoke to him, and he was very excited to serve on the board. So I would move to, and your, his application is in front of you, the council bench here. I'll move to appoint Jay Choi to the DDA for your term, we know it's going to be the remainder of Bryce's term.
Yes.
So the end of 2026.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Cook, seconded by Nikasia, all those, any discussion or questions, comments on that one? No, that's ending 2025. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Any nay? Motion carries. So I think that gives us a full DDA board, which is great, and it satisfies all of the grand parts of the statute for membership.
Yeah, Mr. Charles and Marie Powers, who terms have expired.
They both have terms expired?
Yes.
I'm going to leave them both on until they tell me that they don't want to do it anymore, so.
There's also.
By virtue of reappointing them, or just, or?
Oh, I see what you're saying. I would like to do that, yeah.
Can I have a comment?
Yes. Sure.
If we have other applicants that are interested in being on the board, would that simply be just, if it's done in the current? Like, would that put them in contention with the current incumbent?
Either of them could be considered for appointment here, their, their terms have expired, for instance, Rod and Marie, their terms have expired. They could be reappointed, or they could appoint new people in those maps.
Okay, so I would wonder, maybe we could pause them and review the applicants before we make a decision?
Yeah, I didn't know there are other applicants, so, okay.
Yeah. Okay, I wouldn't.
Okay, yeah, I'll just hold on those other two, so, and then Rod and Marie can continue to serve until we, never until others are appointed.
Yeah, yeah, because per the statute, like I wrote up there for Bryce Clark too, a member can, shall hold office until the member's successor is appointed.
Okay.
So even though they may officially expire at the end of this month, they're still on until other actions taken, either reappointed or a new member, even if they were wishing to leave, they still are members until they get, someone replaces them.
Great, okay, thank you. Council have any other points, questions, concerns on these? Item number E, 9E, where we're on? Boards and commission appointments. So nine F is the CDBG bids to remove, replace exterior doors to the council chamber hallway.
And we're going to have to punt on this tonight as much as I'd like to do it, as my memo outlined. Couple things, and I reached out to both people, yeah, Monday morning for the Open County Compliance Officers for the CDBG program, and one of them bounced back, they're out on leave until the 16th. And the other one, I tried to call, I've emailed, and no response, and he's basically the head person on this, and, and the things, and we've had discussions with him over the phone the last few weeks about trying to get some of these projects moving forward. The problem with this one is, when we pivoted from the slider door here to the swing doors, it was different than originally bid, so he said, you need to rebid it. I'd already received a bid from a company, and so, okay, well, their bid is in, and then I went and listed it on our mittin, the Michigan Purchasing Program, and before I could even call them to say, hey, by the way, we're going to have to rebid this, he was on the phone, hey, I see that door I bid on your mittin program, I said, yep, you're fine, however, you will need to provide a bid bond. They are going to require a bid bond, whether it's a bond or cashier's check, by the bid, by the due date, which is a couple of weeks out, no problem. And then I saw on our mittin, you can see the number of people that have collected or downloaded the specs for the bidding and stuff, we had three or four, five door companies, other, that is reporting agencies, out of the, maybe a dozen that downloaded the bid docs. The one company out of Auburn Hills called to say, hey, we want to come out and do some measurements, great, met them out here, it was bid out as aluminum doors. While they're here measuring, they said, you know, are you doing steel? I said, well, I know steel's cheaper, but if you want to do a bid for both, we'll see what happens, I don't know. Bid date came, I hadn't received the bid bond from the original bidder. The Auburn Hills company showed up, said, here's our bid, I opened it up, it was only for steel doors, so not as advertised. That was last. That was last Wednesday afternoon, day at three o'clock. Thursday, I was off. We didn't receive, Monday, we come in, here's our mail, and there's the bid bond check. That was mailed ten days earlier from Mount Clements. So they bid it well before it was due, they bid it with proper specs, but their bid bond showed up after the deadline. The other person showed up on time, but didn't bid it as spec. So I, I suppose I, that all that information and the bids both to Open County Compliance, and have not heard back. I, I would rec, I would expect they'll probably award it to the ones who bid it as spec. It was, the bid bond is probably a pretty minor thing, it wasn't here on time, versus someone that bid it completely different than the specs. But I was hoping to hear back by this evening, but have not. So we'll have it up for the next month.
Okay.
And I was still disappointed that we still only got two bids out of, you know, eight, you know, all these people download them and they don't bid on them.
So no action on nine A. Nine G is the Moyers Street Design and Engineering Proposal Consideration?
Yep, yep, and you, the design is in front of you, the, the estimate. On page two, you'll see the preliminary cost opinion is about eight hundred and fifty-five. And it breaks it down, three forty-six for the water main, five oh eight for the drainage and paving improvements. This is the project we got the MDOT Category B grant for, which will cover about fifty percent of the road paving. So up to about two hundred and thirty thousand to help us cover some of that costs. And Rose proposed then to do this. Where is it? There, if you look in the bottom of the third page, under compensation, Rose provides a lump sum fee of sixty-two five to do those follow-up items that were provided. Due to the design, the engineering plans, bid spec, bid award, and all the things that lead us up to awarding the bid. We did an additional walkthrough today on Moyers, I'm sorry, on Park Street, you know, as, you know, some of that restoration. Of course, that project, the contractor really had a hard time, the underground contractor, the paving company that did our paving here, and that was the same underground contractor, they, they really struggled with that project, of course, and extended way out there. We had some issues with some of the design that come to light about the, the trees and, and the right-of-way areas, how it's steeper because the road grades were adjusted for drainage and things like that. So we're, we're trying to impress on, on Row. We understand you have to do certain things for engineering standards, but there's other things we want to, you know, not be so drastic on, and we'll minimize the impact on the right-of-way and people's ability to maintain those right-of-ways and things like that. We had a couple of issues with some of the drain structures that ended up, because of gas lines, that weren't as initially located where they're initially, you know, thought to be from, from consumers. So we ended up moving catch basins, now they're so close to the sidewalk, you, you can step off a sidewalk and drop, you know, six, eight inches into a catch basin lid. And so we really had some concerns about those. The, the project we're looking to do here, mirrors almost identical, one block south, less trees, but still pretty flat and straight. There are some areas where the, the driveways on the homes are quite a bit lower. And of course, the designers always want to kind of lower that down, because they don't want to push water on to the private property, but it's already in that wave. So you start to adjust and fix that problem, there's a domino effect. So overall, the work that they did was okay, the water main worked and stuff. That, that's more of the contractor doing the work. We'll see if they are providing on this next one next year. Any thoughts or adds to that, Don, seems like you, even you can blow the place up. So, you know, and, and Don and Rudy were out there a lot. They're, they're out there daily, multiple times a day, helping, pointing out, directing, you know, that, because sometimes they know what's underground, you know, more than others. And, and again, and their feedback is very valuable to us and even to the onsite personnel. But, so the, the idea is to do this project, initially Rudy and I were talking a few weeks ago, it'd be nice to do it towards the beginning of summer, but I, I think it's probably going to be like a July one, beginning again. The way the design and everything works, and then getting the bids out, and we don't want to rush, we want to bid relatively early. But I can't remember, there was some issues back in with Paul, and looking at our timeframe, isn't it fiscal year, July one? So if we, if we aim for July, again, starting in July, or second week in July, should never be a problem for Halloween.
Shouldn't be. Almost was.
And, and it was a problem. It, it should be, I think, more like an eight-week project or something like that, not, not sixteen, or whatever it is.
Yeah, that's wrong.
It was, it was bad. So it will probably, it, that will take us, the school's over, you know, second week of June, something like that. So we wait a couple more weeks before we start. We should be able to have the thing done July, August, you know, by the time school's going back, roughly. You know, even if it's substantially done, and, you know, there's some restoration to do. Doing restoration in first week or two of September is whole different than doing it first week or two of December. So that, that's related to the contractor work, not so much the design engineering. But some of those things, you know, we, we have some corrections we want to see Row make in the design to, to make it a little bit easier on the, the end product. Not so much what's in the ground, but what's left over on top.
So you're comfortable with using them again, as kind of like lessons learned?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Again, and we are the, are the laypeople, right? We see things and they see things, we don't have a drain problem here, and we won't have a problem here, but then they can, well, the standard says this, and you got to do this. And we understand that, but, you know, we have some unique grounds around here, for one, for water isn't a major problem like it is in a lot of areas of the state. So we can get away with the little things, cheating on those standards here and there as far as flow and stuff. So.
Joe, is this more, a little bit more expensive than we originally thought? I feel like I remember a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar number. I know that we're getting a, like, a two hundred and thirty K grant about.
Oh, you, so you're talking about the, the estimated construction cost? I don't know, where it's, that's, that's still probably-
Eight fifty-five.
Um, that, I, I don't think so. I think, so last year, when, I think we did bet, bid it out, thinking it was going to be around seven fifty, and it came in like eight fifty, so this one did come in higher than any of your estimate. So I think this is adjusted for that reason, if we're comparing it to the, the previous initial construction cost estimate that we started last year. Yes.
We discussed-
Uh, if you recall, our, our parking lot was a hundred and sixty or something below estimate. And, you know, the, the Park Street project, there was five, six bidders, something like that, and they were low, and they were still a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-five more than our engineer's estimate. So, you know, that, you know, you try to guess the market, and they have a lot of data and projects all around to kind of pinpoint where these projects are going, and it could still be off.
Right. Thank you.
So overall, I, I have no concerns with, with going forward, with Row to do design engineering. We, we just have to stay on top of them for our, get our will in there sometimes, too, that, you know, we understand the standards, and certain standards you can't mess with, right? But certain things like the right-of-way area, and whether we want to, how wide it is, and what's on the edge of the road versus thicker gravel or, lighter gravel, or, or the seating all the way to the edge of the road, certain, those things that are kind of more of our preferences.
Do you have multiple, like, design engineers that you could ask for proposals from, or do you find that using Row is best just because of, they know our?
Be, 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 i- i- it's kind of like using your attorney and your accountant, or your auditors, you know? You hate to, you're not just, you, you want them a long-term relationship, and you build on them, and they have that, the, the, especially if you get someone that's been with you a long time. Years ago, Doug Skilas was here for many, many years, designing a lot of projects. I mean, you walk down, look at some of these prints from the eighties and nineties, they were Row. They went away for, with Joe Young, with Noah and Faust for a number of years, because he had a relationship with them on his previous, right? So those relationships help. You know, we're pretty rough on them at times, and we, we don't hold back when we tell them, no, we've told you, we don't like this, and, you know, you need to correct that. And it's funny, because, you know, Don has quite a presence out there when he's, whether it's talking to Row or the contractors, right? And, and Rudy's, Rudy's a softer spoken, um, causes less of a shadow, let's say. But Rudy was right on it today with Paul about where we're at looking on this street, and how we're, we're going to do things differently on Moyers, and there was, it was very clear and concise. So A, that's, gives me confidence, both, you know, big shoes to fill, and Don's, and Rudy's been along, around for twenty-six, twenty-seven years, too. He knows this stuff. There's just a different role for him to fill, because he's had, you know, as those roles change, how is he going to fill in that role? And, and today was a, was a good, good test of that, because we'd walked it for an hour and a half out there this morning.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposal for design engineering services from Row for the amount of sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Support? Motion by Cook, seconded by Kemp. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call both, please.
Cook?
Yes.
Um, Kemp?
Yes.
Nikasia?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Motion carries. Nine H is the water well maintenance and well monitoring bids consideration. Mr. Braden?
Good evening, the council.
Good evening.
So annually, we have our production wells and our monitoring wells tested and sampled. We have four monitoring wells and three production wells. The last two years, we've used Peerless Midwest for this sampling and testing. And we're recommending that we contract them again this year for the price not to exceed five thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. So they'll go out, on the monitoring wells, and they'll pull DLCs on, and then results from that. And then on the production wells, they do a look down in the efficiencies of the pumps and the motors, and do some oil changes and packing. Anything that needs to be done in the production wells.
It kind of tells us how well they're doing when they're ready for an overhaul.
Yeah, it's their efficiency test, Row. They tell you how, you know, how your screen is, is performing, and how your pumps are wearing. So usually you see, see over a period of time, like within an eight to ten year period, your efficiencies of your, of your wells, your production wells, decline. And then every ten to fifteen years, we have to do some repairs and upgrades.
Yeah. They pull the wellheads right up out of the ground and stuff, and then, yeah.
But these are just, these are just, these are just the tests, too. And then we get the test results back and go over it with the contractor that did the work. And then that would be final.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any idea why the, uh, beds are so different?
I have no idea.
We don't, yeah, a couple of years ago, when they're like, where do these? And it's, it's the monitoring of the wells, the, the sampling and monitoring of them that they're way out on. And if you separate these out, it's like, why is one doing it for a quarter of what the other one does? And these are similar companies. I don't know.
That's what they, this is what they do with big wells, yeah. But on the other hand, when we had to have our well rebuilt a couple of years ago, Northern Well Pump was less expensive than here. We've used both, we've used both companies throughout the years, but I, I couldn't, we get the same reports. It's almost identical form, except the, their letterhead is different. But it's the exact same form.
Because it's labor, there's labor you bring out to the wells, you drop down, take samplings, you take them off. It kind of blew us away a couple of years ago, too, it's like-
I'll make a motion to contract with Peerless Midwest for the testing of three production wells and the annual sampling of the twelve monitoring, monitoring wells for the price not to exceed five thousand four hundred and sixty dollars.
Support? Motion by Kemp, seconded by Nikasia. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call both, please.
Ross?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Nikasia?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Next up is nine I, Propose Resolution twenty-four thirteen for the MDOT permit, permit signatories.
Yep, just kind of an annual thing, so MDOT knows who is officially approved to go on their permit gateway system and apply for, and permits. As you know, Chief Saul just did one on the fly last week, it worked out really well. He does them for things like that. Don will do them for, again, they do lane closure for, you know, working on a signage or repairing the light poles, like they would have to get ran over. That'll be, that'll be Rudy now, does a little learning curve in the, on the system, but this is just to get our names up to MDOT so they know and who's, who's officially authorized.
Okay, make motion to adopt Resolution twenty-four thirteen as presented.
Second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Ross. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, roll call both.
Nikasia?
Yes.
Cook? Ross?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, that resolution is adopted. And for nine J, Propose Resolution twenty-four eleven, will be clerkled, ten objectives.
I had to help our new clerk kind of locate our charter and see where, like, because these are the ones you're, when it says all these numbers up here, here's where to find them, here's what you, you know, so.
So I do print everything and read it, and-
And she didn't run away.
I didn't run away.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty, twenty-four dash eleven as presented.
Second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Ross. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call both, please.
On your resolution, so is a nay.
Oh, it is, okay, we spoke. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any nay? Motion carries. That resolution is adopted. Next is nine K, Propose Resolution twenty-four twelve, Remanded for Ten Objectives.
I left a sign, number seven is a blank item, because I think there, there was something that Lori mentioned a few months ago, you said, yeah, I think that, and you made a note, so I'm like, I don't know what that was. So.
I like, I like leaving it blank like that.
I'm like, there's something out there, I don't know what it was.
Did we talk about the website?
Oh.
Because our, our website seems to have, uh, regressed.
You were having problems with the, with the mobile, with the mobile thing?
Yeah, but to be real, I think most people are, uh-
You know, I've looked at it on my phone, and I don't have a problem with it, that's right. But yours is an Apple pro, yours is an Apple, I'm, I'm the Samsung.
Yeah, when I look at it online, it's like, it looks like it's for mobile view, but then it's squeezed way up into like a left-hand corner.
You're an Apple phone, too, right?
And I'm Android, that.
Okay.
I don't know why it did that, because it didn't used to be like that.
Yeah, well, you know, apps and, and things like that, they, uh-
I just got a four oh three message.
I'm just curious.
Do you want to add number seven as just?
Oh, yeah, so mine is kind of off to the side, it's smaller, but-
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, but if I just, I just, I, when I zoom in, it, it seems normal.
See everything.
Yeah.
Okay, also, we might need to tell Google that when, that when they have us, it says forbidden. When you click, using the direct Google link?
I don't talk to Google, so.
Don't talk to Google, that's fine.
So, yeah, I, I suppose there could be some glitches going on there, maybe, you know how sometimes you have to update your phone for certain things to work again? And there's always changes, some it seems, so I'm not surprised. I, I usually deal with it on my desktop. And so I won't recognize, I do get it on my phone, though, like on the weekends and check stuff.
Who doubts our website, is that you?
Revise, oh, well, Revise is the one who designed it, and it was twenty eighteen when we first started, it was a whole to do. I mean, there's a lot to build, a whole new one, right? I will add, all I do is add agendas and minutes and, and things like that. I'll add certain links, like I, I put the DDA statute down there, and I created that link, and certain things like that. I put the Public Act, uh, for DDA Public Act Report, TIF Report on there a couple of days ago, and I added that, and a link to it, stuff. And I added that and a link to it, stuff. But as far as function and moving pages around, stuff like that, no. I'm not capable of that, it's, we would have to have them help us with like rearranging or. I'm used to it now, it took, it was pretty frustrating the first year or so, again, it was new.
So, the other thing I noticed, I know the DDA built and expanded their own page.
Yes.
The DDA is gone from our page. Like under boards and commissions and anywhere else, there is no more DDA.
There was something under yesterday, I know I had a link to it, that's where I put the TIF report underneath the DDA. Uh, but that was maybe under government. So I went in there and I was trying to just change our links on our page, 'cause people were calling, was it, I think it was a scarecrow fest. People were calling and looking for information, 'cause they were finding it, they were doing a search and finding the DDA under our old page. What was an old aspect of our page that used to link to theirs. Well, I tried to get rid of that link and it wasn't allowing me. Now, I could have probably have to reach out to our website people and said, "Is there a way I can just get that off here?" Because they, the DDA's domain was downtownoxford.org perhaps, and then it went, then when they got that new site through the county, they just, instead of redirecting it, they got a new domain, it's downtownoxford.info now. And so, ours is still pointing, ours is still, the links on our page are still, the links on our page are still pointing to the old one. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, under the boards and commissions, it does not say DDA from the village website, so people won't be able to navigate there.
All right, yeah, um, so, 'cause I was trying to. Perhaps we could even redirect the, the DDA or downtownoxford.org, we could probably just get that domain, 'cause I think it's still active under name, and just redirect it to it lands at the same spot as the dot info. Would be probably a better way to do it.
Another thing I could think of, and we can't check those, or not know if it's something we wanna put on Joe's resolution or not, but, basically like some kind of public education in some way that explains like the difference between like the village, the township, the DDA, the different, the chamber, the. People don't necessarily know, um, kind of like who to contact, do you get those? Do you get a lot of confusions still?
We get five calls a day that people that live out on Drainer Road or something are calling for a sewer bill or water bill or permit, five calls a day.
Yeah. I don't know how big of a ask that would be to add that, just maybe even something to start looking into, like, and that could be a part of an improvement to our website, it's just like, you know. I mean, I don't wanna confuse anybody anymore by finding township stuff on our village website, but just it seems like nobody knows. A lot of people don't know the different aspects of our.
So, and on our site, if you click in the home, and then there's a dropdown for, it says government. And under government, you'll see, well, well, you got the village council, planning commission, zoning board appeals, downtown development, and that's where I put the TIF plan. If I click on a downtown development authority. It goes right to the DDA site, downtownoxford.info.
Wait, where'd you, where did you go? Okay, I think this is exactly, this applies the problem.
Right, right, so.
You have to click into another page first, I get it, I see.
Well, I, I, yeah, when I'm at the home, home, I, there's a dropdown menu.
Yeah.
Well, when you're on the desktop, they're across the top.
I see, you have to click government, you can't just use the drop, it's not, DDA is not found in the dropdown under government, you have to click government like the.
Right, oh, I see, yep, yeah, because. It lays out, yes, it lays out differently on a desktop, on a desktop, I think those are across the top. And then when you click on it, they also show up down on the page, you don't necessarily have to drop down to get to it. But what I'd like to do is update and the links to the DDA, and I tried that once around the scarecrow festival and I was running into some glitches, 'cause I wanted to like disable parts of our website by changing out that, or removing that old DDA info. Like, well, maybe we should maybe off to, maybe just redirect those links or something.
Okay, you're back.
But enough of DDA.
Yeah, you're on there in a different way.
Right.
My only thought was, we're talking about website and above, and, you know, social media outreach and the presentation. Would it be worth, instead of adding something completely additional? I see Joe being more in a leadership managerial, maybe partner with, for CCF who does the internships with the DDA, and they're looking for local government places to potentially explore that option to do some of those things.
What do you think about taking out an intern?
Um.
I said explore, I didn't say.
So, that was how, initially, when Kimberly and Kelly brought on, two years ago, the lady from the Ford County Community, the intern. And part of the thing was, hey, you know, maybe one day a week or half a day a week, she could come over and help with me and, you know.
That's a really handsome.
I have a hard time delegating that out, especially for someone who just kinda sits in for a half a day. Um, so I kinda let her just kinda stay over there, 'cause they were able to keep her busy. Because, you know, I'm doing all this, it's like, so now I gotta take time, a whole day to teach someone how to do something that's, I could do in an hour. Uh, and you're there for the summer and they're gone. So like, mm, I didn't mind helping the person or talk to them or about our site, but it's like, for me to say, here's, click, 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 now do this for me, and then just leave it. And I was like, nah, I can't do that.
Why does it say bar, and it's saying have it all to put together?
Oh, yeah, well, again, and I don't know, I'm going back to, um, the DDA uses social media and stuff ten times more than I do, for various reasons. One is I don't, I don't, I don't look at it as the same. But again, their activities are driven by that. Whereas, you know, I, I, we put things out that are more, like I said, boring, we're doing hydrant flushing. Hydrant flushing. I didn't, I missed, I was, I was on here, so I didn't catch the first part of your saying, I heard you say something about presentations, but then I heard the intern, but I thought you were talking about social media.
Having to make all the presentations that healthy one.
What presentations on the, on the social media?
Well, just like, you know, local government, so, I mean, I can just do it, I can probably work that up real quick.
No, I, okay, so again, I was still on the website trying to fix something, and I missed part of that first part of your conversation. As far as like a, like a flow chart in the wing.
Yeah, I think I'm actually gonna be doing it, I'm gonna be like a guest speaker in, at one of the elementary schools on local government, and I was gonna talk about Oxford. So maybe I can take the element, if people can understand like a third grade level, then probably, it might be beneficial to everyone, you just never know.
And you know, I know Bob Davis has talked to us about, hey, new planning commissioners come on, new ZB members come on, it's like, you kinda need to give them a little update or refresher or, you know. I did it with the DDA and their statute back in like August or something like that. Uh, because, and some of them are like, wow, I've never even saw that, you know, statute, I've never read it, you know, it was maybe given to them, but they never read it. And because again, you ask them to come on and volunteer and do this, this, and this, the last thing they're gonna do is read some boring statute that's eighteen pages long. But by highlight it and encapsulate it and put in bullet items in a, in a two-page thing, it was able to go through it and just highlight those things that they should be aware of. So, you know, I, I enjoy doing that, because it, it, they need to know. So as we all move forward, it's kind of on the same page.
Yeah. Do we have that, like, I don't know, whether it's digital or a hard copy for like, here's what the planning commission does, here's what the, you know, for like a new.
Bylaws and.
Yeah, that's it.
It's got a checklist down there too, if you want it.
Yeah.
You think you can get it for you?
Maybe we already have what we need. Is there anything else you wanna add to Joe or to David has? You always have the full plate anyway, so.
Yeah, well, some days I'm jumping down the hole looking out of Sewer Lane. I'm not afraid to do that either. I'd rather do that than go on social media, matter of fact.
I'm sure you would.
It's another Sewer Hall.
Yeah, different kind.
Adopt the resolution twenty-four dash twelve as presented, it's nothing at line seven.
There you go, line seven is blank.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
A motion made by Cook, seconded by Ross, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any names? Motion carries, that resolution is adopted. Nine L, management staff and wages and compensation. So, um, typically we look at a wage increase for our clerk treasurer and manager each year. Our clerk treasurer is new this year, so she's taking care of, with her new contract. But our manager, I do have a salary currently in front of me, and I can share that. But this worked historical wage increases, from twenty twenty-two, these were all basically cost of living, they were cost of living. So twenty twenty-two is five percent, twenty twenty-three is five percent, twenty twenty-four is three percent. So I would propose at least three percent for twenty twenty-five, so this will be effective January one. And so the current salary is ninety-one thousand nine thirty-six, and so three percent would make it ninety-four thousand six ninety-four and eight cents. Any other thoughts?
Can you say that one more time, sorry?
Sure, um, so our manager's current salary with a three percent cost of living increase to be effective January one, twenty twenty-five, would bring it up to ninety-four thousand six hundred and ninety-four dollars and eight cents. Wanted to see what council's thoughts were, if that was reasonable. I know cost of livings are anywhere, I mean, from two point five, I've seen to three to, you know, even four, yeah, so.
I think that's on the card.
I'll make that motion, if there's more discussion, if anybody wants to take it differently. Okay, so motion made by Cook, seconded by Ross, any discussion?
None.
Okay, uh, roll call both.
Um, Ross?
Yeah.
Kent?
Yes.
Nikasia?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes. Motion carries.
Well, thank you, council, and if anybody comes up with a line seven item, then, you know, you can always ask me. Sometimes, you know, those things come out of the blue, and if something comes up to your mind, hey, you know, look into this, or what about this? You know, I'm always happy to, you know, you don't have to wait till a meeting to ask questions or find out what's going on on that street or things like that. I'm, I'm happy to do it then versus telling it all into a meeting too sometime. Sometimes I find it easier just to get you guys something out a week or two before the meeting, just because, you know, you can see it and absorb it and.
Absolutely, yeah, we appreciate that, I appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Yep, thank you. Okay, ten items removed from consent agenda, there are none, a lot of public comment, anyone like to speak during our second round of public comment? See no one approaching, so move to committee reports. Noda, I don't believe we have any. They're all numbered wacky, but. And then planning commission, cable commission is Lauren's absent, but, um, did the planning commission meet?
Not lately.
Okay. DDA Jacob?
Um, we discussed many of the items already, I know that there was a couple of events as well this month. Um, I don't know, did you wanna come up and talk about the success of those or anything like that? Sure.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Since our last meeting, we had a country another, we had the ladies shopping event and the dudes day event. Um, I would say that that was not a successful event, so we're looking at potentially, if we were to choose to do something like that in twenty twenty-five, we would have to look a little more strategically around timing and a little bit more planning leading up to it. We just didn't get a lot of feedback from businesses, even despite our town staff promoting it. Then we also had our small business Saturday, which was also Remembrance Day. Um, I think the weather was very, very poor that morning for our initiative. So after about an hour and a half, I called it, 'cause I was freezing, and relocated the giveaways indoors, which I think that was much more successful. So I think looking into twenty twenty-five, I think twenty twenty-four, we were trying to be very respectful because it landed on Remembrance Day as well. But I think for twenty twenty-five, we'll look at doing something a little bit differently, maybe something in the afternoon or maybe not. An initiative, I think cost-wise, it wasn't necessarily beneficial. Um, in my opinion, I still need to get through all the numbers, but I don't know that it had the intent that we were looking for to get people downtown into the shops that day. Um, we pushed really hard on online shopping as well, partnering with OC shop, shop OC Main Street. Um, we had some new businesses join into that, which we just heard about at the national level, the group, and shared that with the meeting this afternoon. So we had some new businesses, we had some new items, so that was really exciting to get called out in a positive way for that. Um, we also, we had our soup and sweets stroll, which was a success, a lot of work, but very, very cold as well, but it was a very good success. We had over seventeen hundred tickets accounted for, so it was a wonderful event. Um, and then this Sunday, we have our indoor holiday market, and we have our Polar Express, which concludes our winter activities, and I shall regroup. Um, I don't know if you want, I don't wanna interrupt, so.
Oh, no, no, go ahead.
Oh, just if you're interested from a staffing standpoint, I started doing phone screens for the support position. It's been really interesting, I worked in HR prior to taking a break, and so I've never had this experience before, but a lot of individuals that I've reached out to wanting to schedule the initial phone screens have, for one reason or another, come back and said, "Thanks for the opportunity, but I am not gonna proceed with the four or five," which was kind of interesting. So, um, still working through that, we do have a good pool of candidates. Um, I haven't had an opportunity to really dig into those unfortunately, just with timing, so that's gonna be on my agenda over the next couple of weeks as well. Um, also, just as I know, we have our accreditation scheduled for February fifth, so I know that there'll be some meeting times that we'll want to speak with the group here, and so that's gonna be my primary focus is reviewing the strategic plan, kind of making changes based on the changes of staffing within the DDA, really looking at what we want to focus on from a strategic planning standpoint, and then also focusing on the accreditation.
Yeah, you hit all the important ones, thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, Hallie, you in trio?
Uh, we did meet. We met with our lawyer about some.
Encroachments down.
Encroachments on the trail.
It was a pretty quick meeting other than that, wasn't it?
Yeah, I don't think, there was hardly anything else on the agenda, other than some closed session.
During the closed session, so I left and went out and.
Great, thank you. And then the ZB, I assume is not in that?
Nope.
Great. Um, manager clerk staff attorney reports, Mr. and Mrs.
Um, yeah, well, thanks, council, for your confidence in, in me, and, and your appreciation is, is well received. And I, I like working here, I like everybody over here. Um, congratulations to the new electeds, that was a tough election this year. Good to have you back. She has her, her nameplate, 'cause she saved it before, in fact. 'Cause I've yet to complete Vicky's nameplate yet. And I just wanna say congratulations to Terry and Don both, who well-deserve changes in life. Uh, it's been great working with both of you the last seven years, I started almost to the day, seven years ago myself, and it's been great. It's, you know, it's always sad to see people go, that worked so well with us, but I know Vicky's gonna work well, Rudy's gonna work well, so I am, I am blessed in that sense. And, um, yeah, council's gonna be good, Jacob's back, he's got four women to contend with. New one, but that's okay, I think it's gonna be great. Don and Rudy just finished up a hiring, a new DPW, 'cause we've been in anticipation of the shifting around. Um, as I mentioned to you when you were here at Don's party, Mike Motters, a longtime employee, twenty-plus year employee, did get his S three license, and we have now promoted him to a laborer two, correct? And so there's gonna be some changes there, with Rudy stepping into that new role, and then Mike Motters stepping up. And so we'll have, we have our two new guys who worked out great, that we hired in August, and another new one coming, around towards the end of the year, first of the year. Um, and one thing I did, I had mentioned to you briefly earlier today, the DPW just does things without even being asked. When, when the soup and sweet stroll came around, there was several places downtown that had not addressed their snow yet. And they just took it upon themselves and went and got after it, you know, spent a lot of time with the quad and pushing and driving and putting salt in the parking bays and stuff like that, 'cause they knew how important that was. They didn't need to ask, they didn't need direction, they just knew. And that's, that's up to them, and then Chief, your guys out there were so great, they had a lot to deal with as they're helping cross that crossings. A lot of people chattering back and forth, and so, thank you to you and them, and it was a great idea that you had, I'm glad it came through for closing off the verdict. Um, I think that was, and Kelsey even mentioned, a lot of good feedback on that. And I know the DPW was already there, so them parking the vehicles across there just made it safer and it's the flow so much better, so, good idea.
I just wanted to add, I've gotten a lot of positive feedback from businesses as well, of boards, of removal, they were like, oh, is the village, are you caring about all this?
No, that was just for you, Kimberly.
And also for the verdict as well, and I, I always give you credit, because people were just telling me, what a great idea, I was like, I can't give credit to the verdict, but.
That's great.
Did you like it or did you not like it?
That's wonderful, great. Okay, um, we'll go to our. That's wonderful, great, okay, we'll go to our clerk, O'Nega first.
Well, I just want to thank everybody for your, well, your warm wishes for my future, and just for everything you've done for me over the years, you know, I will miss all of you, I really will, so, I know you'll carry on without me, and I don't think he's going to do a great job, I feel really good about that, because I was worried that you weren't going to be taken care of, the manner that you've become. But I'm, I'm good with that now, and, yeah, I'll try and stop that and visit, I really, I just.
We'll stop and visit on the way up north, too.
Yeah, hey, if you're ever in on break.
Way to make it on.
You have my number, we do like company up there, so, thank you so much.
Thank you. Clerk, Tom?
I just want to thank you guys for the opportunity, I know I have big shoes to fill, and everyone's been really great, welcoming me in and everything, so, I just want to thank everybody for that, I look forward to working with everybody.
Thank you.
You look forward to not being part of the next election.
Yes.
Awesome.
Never again.
Wonderful, okay, council comments, Ross?
I'm really sad that my first day is, and you two are departing, I just know how valuable you both are, so, I am looking forward to working with you, Vicky, as well, I am, I know these are big shoes to fill, and you will be missed, thank you for the reelection, and again, it's, I'm very happy to be back and working with everyone again, so thank you all.
Thank you.
Welcome back, Ashley, and also sad to see you go down, although I know you'll be my neighbor for many more years to come, so I'm excited about that, and Terry, same to you, you will be missed, and you really helped do a lot here in our community, and we thank you for both of you, actually, so, just thanks in general, and welcome to our new team members, too.
Ashley, welcome back, happy to have you, Don, Terry, you both have done tremendous work, and I know, whether it's seen or unseen, everything you've done, it's certainly left an impact, so thank you.
And, yep, I'll just, yeah, echo everything everyone said, it's exactly the same, very excited to have Ashley back on council, very excited that Jacob was reelected, congratulations to Don and Terry both, you know, as I always say in local government, too, it's like, when people don't know necessarily who you are, it means you're doing a really good job, because you keep things in order and keep things running, and it's only, you know, when people, you know, can't flush their toilets, or, you know, don't get, you know, their water bill on time, or, you know, our finances are in a hole, that people notice what's going wrong, and so, I kind of look at it all that way, it's like, as long as things are quiet, and people are happy, and don't necessarily know what we're doing, to a certain extent, that means everybody's happy, so, I always encourage people to come and, you know, be involved in local government, but local government should serve people and should run smoothly, and that's what all of you have allowed it to always do, and so, and definitely Joe as well, has, you know, a big leader around here still, so, congratulations to Vicky, and we're extremely excited to have you on the team, and, you know, just the fact that Terry feels comfortable leaving says a lot, it's very impressive for you to be here with us, too, so, yeah, I think that is it, then, if anyone has any other comments?
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Well, journey at eight thirty-seven.